I'm calling the February 1st City Council meeting to order. And before we move on to our agenda items this evening, I do want to acknowledge that we are still using our remote meeting format. On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. The proclamation has been extended until termination of the state emergency or until it's repealed by the governor or legislature. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. Meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or to make comments. And for those members of the public on the call, welcome this evening. At this point in time, I'm going to take a moment to take a roll call of the council members in attendance, so please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Great. That is seven of seven councilmembers. Next, I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could ask you all to keep your microphones muted during this, but I do welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments. So for those of you who have submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. And for those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments that did not sign up in advance, please press star 3 on your phone, and we will call the last two digits of your phone number when it's your turn to make comments. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes, Kathy has indicated a desire to speak.
Thank you. So for those making comments, please make sure to direct the comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly, and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes, and please re-mute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you're able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written in verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us today. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Kathy, I'm going to send you a request to unmute. You'll need to press star 6 on your phone, and then you'll also need to unmute your phone if you've muted that as well.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. This is Kathy McCory. I'm the CEO at the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, and I just have a few brief comments this evening. First of which, I'd like to thank the city for all of their participation and awards at Community Awards last week. To me, it's always extremely moving to see all of these wonderful individuals who step up in our community. I think in my 20 years of service in the chamber industry, Community Awards is by far my favorite event. So thank you again for all you did to support the event, and congratulations to all the winners. I also want to thank you for your consideration on the consent agenda for this evening. I served last year on LTAC Advisory Council and look forward to the opportunity to serve again. It's my pleasure to be able to do so. And lastly, going back to the study session, I know I took a lot of your time last week, and I sent comments about several of the things that the city is working on in its next round of funding, including grants. And I just want to remind you that if we're ever able to support businesses, it helps save those jobs and hopefully create new jobs. And that in turn then supports the entire community, meaning that we take people off of needing assistance, whether it be rental or food, and we bring donations back to nonprofits that also support low-income elderly and those in need. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Kathy. City Clerk, do we have anyone else speaking this evening?
No one else has signed up to speak, but I'll just ask if there's anyone else on the line who'd like to make comments, please press star 3 on your phone. That's star 3. And I'm just monitoring the callers now, and I don't see that anyone else is indicating a desire to speak.
Thanks very much. It was nice to hear tonight Kathy's appreciation for the Community Awards and also comments on LTAC appointments and funding for programs and services during COVID. Thanks for joining us this evening, Kathy. And anyone who would have liked, who would like to make comments, this is just a reminder that you can always submit them at any time to your city council by emailing them at citycouncil@issiquawawa.gov. I'm also going to head over to Council President Hunt and ask her to summarize any comments that the council might have received by email on tonight's agenda topic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. And while we're doing virtual meetings, we are summarizing emailed comments that we've received on agenda topics. And as of this meeting start time, we have not received any email comments on the items that are specifically on the agenda that occurred between the last time we discussed items that we've discussed before and today's meeting, so I don't have anything to, anything to summarize this evening.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. We'll move to committee and regional reports. Let's start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Councilmember Zach Hall here. A couple of quick reports. Let me get out my notes. The Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors met last Wednesday. We've received a couple informational items, including a presentation from the city of Sumner about the Lower White River Restoration Project, but nothing of particular impact to Issaquah. The next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 24th at 3:30 PM. And then the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council met last Friday to discuss the final amendment recommendations for the housing chapter of the countywide planning policies. Those recommendations were approved and are now headed to Deputy Council President Ray and the other members of the Growth Management Planning Council. I tried to summarize those recommendations to share with you all tonight, but I failed miserably, as they're more complicated to condense than I thought they would be. So I'll be following up with an email to the city council and the administration with that information if you're interested. And for those of you in the community who want to learn more about the Housing Chapter Amendment recommendations, or for that matter, the countywide planning policies more generally, I'd be happy to share that information with you as well, and you can find my email and phone number on the city council webpage. The next meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee is scheduled for Wednesday, March 24th at 1:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember De Michelle. On February 21st, I attended the Eastside Human Services Forum meeting, and we discussed the search for an executive director and formed a search committee. And in line with the new organizational structure, each member selected a subcommittee to serve on. I selected the advocacy group, which is the same group that I've been serving on this past year. On February 28th, I attended the kickoff meeting for the Connect2 Community Advisory Group. As a reminder, this is part of the Healthier Here Governing Board. A facilitator ushered us through a getting-to-know-you exercise. We received an overview of the project, and we shared our hopes and vision for the Community Information Exchange Project. And as part of my representation on the Healthier Here Governing Board, they will be holding a meeting this coming Thursday, 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Next is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Let's see. I have attended two Sound Cities Association lunches with County Councilmember Claudia Balducci and the SCA's new president, Ed Prince. Both were great opportunities for networking and really getting to know the representatives in the area. And Claudia Balducci, learning about how she came onto council and some of the areas that she's interested was quite interesting. On Wednesday, the third coming up, I will attend the Puget Sound Regional Council's Economic Development District Board. Two of the agenda items are the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and Next Steps, which I'm particularly interested in, and the Regional Industry Employment Discussion. That meeting's at 1 o'clock on Wednesday, so if anybody has any questions, that's great. It's mostly informational, so I'll bring it back if there's anything to learn from it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. Related to Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, for which I served as chair last year, on the consent agenda tonight is Agenda Bill 8113. It's the annual appointments of the committee members. There are five. A councilmember must serve as a chair, and I'm serving again this year as chair, so there were four openings. We had 11 applications, and the state is very prescriptive about who fills those chairs, not the people, but specifically collecting tax and who receives the tax. Anyway, the point in me bringing it up is just that we had 11 applications, and from anyone's memory that I talked to, that was the most applications that we've, that we've ever had since we started collecting the tax. So thank you to everybody who applied, and the appointments are in the packet. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors had a special meeting last Thursday to discuss one item, and it was to, whether to provide interim chief services to Mercer Island's Fire Department, because their chief is leaving, I think at the end of January, so I guess today would be the first day. And so Mercer Island would be paying Eastside Fire and Rescue $14,000 a month in exchange for interim chief services, and the board unanimously approved that proposal. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will have its regular monthly meeting on February 11th at 4:00 PM at their headquarters station on Newport Way, and I do not yet have an agenda. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, February 10th. We will be discussing the 2021 legislative session thus far, solid waste fee and sewer rate developments. I assume that means for the county. Countywide planning policies, and then have an update on King County Regional Homelessness Authority, levies and ballot measures in King County, and then upcoming SCA issues. This Thursday at 10:00 AM, the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting. The first thing on the agenda is the board will be asked to provide direction to staff on Vision 2050 implementation actions. As you may remember, I was not able to attend the January meeting due to a work-related emergency, and so I have included the presentation that was sent out on, ahead of that meeting. I've sent it out to you and to the mayor. It does not provide a lot of grappling moves onto which one can sink one's claws policy-wise. I'm not really sure how the body is, I'll be frank, I'm not sure the body is supposed to be providing feedback. And of course, SCA reps to GMPP are also generally supposed to reflect SCA policy, so if anybody sees anything in there that they have thoughts on, feel free to share them with me, and I will ask if Mayor Polly and the administration has looked into this issue more, I'm happy to convey their thoughts on. There's going to be a SCA caucus meeting ahead of the GMPP meeting, so I apologize, I'm a little flat-footed on this issue this month, and the reference materials do not shed a lot of light on the subject. We will also be having discussion updates on growth-related bills under consideration by the legislature, school siting briefing paper, and the PSRC's draft 2022-2023 budget and work program. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Councilmember, Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray, and I'm having some technical challenges here. Here we go. The King County Growth Management Planning Council, the GMPC, met on January 27th in a virtual format. The meeting was a work session to review the initial staff work on the 2021 county planning policy updates. The work session involved four rotating breakout groups that explored different aspects of the CPPs, the county planning policies, and this included housing patterns, housing, environmental and economy, transportation, and public facilities. The GMPC members provide the King County staff with input on missing concepts that would be, and what would be implementation challenges. The input will be reflected in an updated draft of the CPPs that will be reviewed by the GMPC at our next meeting on February 24th. In addition to the CPP update, the GMPC will be receiving updates on growth target progress at the February 24th meeting. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Deputy President. Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. On January 21st, the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council met. Wyra 8 is the technical name for our watershed. And we reviewed the legislative priorities of the council for this, for this current legislative session. And we also saw a presentation on the final draft plan from the Ecology-Led Watershed Restoration and Enhancement Committee in Wyra 8, which may sound familiar, because tonight on our regular agenda, we will also be seeing a presentation on the same plan. And so this is a plan that helps address withdrawals from permit-exempt wells, and this is important for salmon, because it is important to have adequate stream flow for salmon habitat in the watershed. So this is a presentation that I will be, I will, I will be seeing for the second time, and looking forward to it. And then we also saw a success story about the Environmental Science Center Salmon Heroes Program, about how they had adapted their educational program during COVID to continue to educate people about salmon. And the next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be March 18th, 2021. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'm now going to move to the mayor's report. There will not be an executive session held this evening. First item on my report today is a Black History Month proclamation, and I'm pleased to provide the following proclamation this evening. Designate February as Black History Month in celebration of achievements by African-Americans and in recognition of their central role in U.S. history. Whereas Black History Month is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements by Black Americans and all people of African descent in the United States. And whereas Black History Month originated in 1926, when famed activist, writer, and preeminent historian Carter G. Woodson influenced the American Historical Society to designate the second week of February as Negro History Week. And whereas Issaquah acknowledges and rejects the long history of institutional and structural racism towards African-Americans in the U.S., and the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to confront racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas King County has declared that racism is a public health crisis, and Issaquah joins its regional partners in pledging to implement a racially equitable response that's centered on community. And whereas Issaquah honors the significant scientific, technological, economic, political, and cultural innovations of African-Americans in the United States, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim February 2021 to be Black History Month in the city of Issaquah, and urge all community members to join me in this observance. The second item on my report today is the Issaquah Vaccine Community Partnership Update. Our Issaquah Vaccine Community Partnership, which includes the city of Issaquah, Swedish Issaquah, Eastside Fire and Rescue, the Issaquah School District, the city of Semamish, Costco, and the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, and more, continues to meet weekly. Unfortunately, there is currently not enough vaccine available, however, to meet demand, and when that changes, Issaquah wants to be ready. As a team, we have been coordinating on possible vaccine distribution sites. Eastside Fire and Rescue has designated Andrew Stevens to be our manager for a future mass vaccination site. Meanwhile, we are focused on protecting our most vulnerable, and I'm pleased to report that starting this week, Eastside Fire and Rescue is using limited vaccine supply to offer mobile vaccination clinics to adult family homes. Learn more at issiquawawa.gov/vaccine, and we'll continue to provide updates as more information is available. And the last item I had tonight was on board and commission recruitment, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we will soon begin recruiting for open board and commission seats, that this is a fun and interesting way to make a difference in your community. Many of our councilmembers have served on boards and commissions prior to becoming a councilmember. So please look for more details, including what seats are open. Our, our application is online, and there's more information at issiquawawa.gov/boards starting on February 5th. And that concludes the mayor's report. And the mayor is scrambling to find her next talking points. There we go. We're going to move on to our next item of business, which is informational updates. This first item is ID 0804. It is the Capital Improvement Plan, or we abbreviate it CIP, process. And I'm going to lead the first portion of the presentation, and I will then pass it over to our Finance Director, Beth Goldberg. And thank you for getting this slide deck up. Good evening, all. Every other year, the city updates its six-year capital improvement plan as required by state law. And as we get ready to embark on the 2022-2027 process, I wanted to provide you with an overview of the approach that I'm going to make in preparing the proposed draft CIP. I will then turn the presentation over to Director Goldberg to go into some more specifics about the CIP and some key revenue sources that support the capital improvement plan. If I can get you to advance the slide. One more. Thank you. There are two different approaches that local government can take in preparing a capital improvement plan. First, an aspirational approach that lists a wide array of projects that may or may not have a funding source. This type of approach allows the organization to highlight its full gamut of needs and identify where funding gaps may exist. Second, it could be a more realistic approach that focuses more narrowly on the projects that the city can afford within the available revenue streams. The last capital improvement plan process took the former approach in an attempt to highlight the need for new revenues, namely the Transportation Benefit District sales tax, so that the city could meet an array of transportation capital needs. For a number of reasons that I will explain later in this presentation, I am recommending that the city take the second approach this time, the more realistic approach for this year's capital improved, draft capital improvement plan. Under this approach, the plan will recommend projects that we anticipate can be funded with existing revenues as well as fund balances. And while the CIP may highlight some future-year projects with more funding, there is more funding uncertainty. For example, those projects that may require grant funding, the scope of projects without an existing funding source will be limited, because the last year, six-year CIP set a series of priorities for 2022 and beyond. We will use that document as our starting point. Next slide, please. In determining which projects to include in the 2022-2027 proposed CIP, we use the following criteria. Whether the project has been established as a community priority through a planning document such as a Perk Strategic Plan or a Mobility Master Plan, for example, we will prioritize projects that replace or repair existing infrastructure. And projects with known funding sources will also be prioritized, as well, as will projects providing environmental benefits. We will also use our strategic plan to guide funding recommendations. And finally, projects that address life safety concerns will also be prioritized. Next slide, please. In terms of priorities, the city's gone through a number of community engagement efforts that give a sense of the community's capital priorities, including the Perk Strategic Plan, the Mobility Master Plan, and Old Town Traffic Calming. That said, it's important to note that we're not able to fund all these priorities within our existing revenue sources. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, the 2020 through 2025 adopted capital improvement plan will serve as a starting point for us this year for the proposed 2022 through 2027 CIP. As was the case with the 2020-2025 CIP, we will focus most intensively on the year 2022, the first year of the next capital improvement plan, as this is the year where we will have the most certainty. As we move through the latter years of the CIP, there is more uncertainty, including how post-COVID realities may influence or change our capital priorities. For example, will traffic patterns and transportation needs return to pre-COVID norms, or will we see new patterns and needs emerging? Also, will the city pursue new revenue sources to support outer-year capital needs? Next slide, please. The 2022 through 2027 proposed capital improvement plan recommends the use of REIT and mitigation fund balances. I'm going to probably get this wrong, but I believe it's realist, Beth, Director Goldberg, can you help me with REIT, just for those that are watching? Real estate excise tax?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Lots of acronyms in here. Director Goldberg shortly will be walking you through our early REIT and mitigation forecasts. While our fund balance outlook is strong, I need to emphasize that there is not going to be enough to support all of our outer-year capital and asset maintenance needs. While not the focus of this year's CIP process, I am recommending that the city starts discussions this year about new revenue sources. And potential revenue sources could include revenues generated by using the Transportation Benefit District, and that could be either an incremental sales tax increase or vehicle licensing fees. Another potential revenue source is property tax levies. Next slide, please. When it comes to new revenue sources, I want to underscore that they take time to develop. And I just want to see if we can move forward. There we go. Thank you. This slide lays out a potential schedule for securing a new revenue source. I am recommending that the city start the process of considering new revenues in the second quarter of this year separately from the CIP process. It is important that we start early in order to allow sufficient time for community input and buy-in. As a reminder, once the city council approves the ballot language, the city can no longer advocate for those items that are in the measure. So the time between now and when the city potentially decides on ballot language is critical in securing community support. Next slide, please. So with this background in mind, I'm going to turn the remainder of the presentation over to Director Goldberg. Director Goldberg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. It's nice to see you. It's been a while. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of the nuts and bolts of this year's CIP, and I'm, to be honest with you, having a little bit of technical difficulty. Every time I touch my mic, I lose the ability to forward slides. So anyway, I apologize about that. So first, I just want to ground all of you as to why we do a CIP every other year, and the State's Growth Management Act requires communities in Washington State to develop six-year capital improvement plans as an element of, of the comprehensive plan. We're required to do so We're required to do so every two years. So we're on that cycle right now. In addition, state law also requires cities to adopt a six-year transportation improvement programs by July 1st. So this image on this slide is a visual depiction of how each one of these planning processes kind of nest in with each other. And basically, the CIP and the TIP are smaller subsets of the larger cities, the city's larger comprehensive plan. It's also important to note that in order to use REIT and mitigation dollars, projects slated for those funding sources must also be included in the CIP. So this is an important framework so that we can start using our real estate excise tax and mitigation dollars. So this image is to reinforce some of what the mayor spoke about in her remarks. So as we're developing a capital improvement plan, it is not being done in isolation. The capital improvement plan is being informed by other planning documents and processes that the city has gone through. So a few examples, park strategic plan, mobility master plan. Mayor also mentioned Old Town Traffic Calming study. And then also, in terms of the utilities, the utilities have a number of capital projects. These are all set forth and contemplated in the utility rate studies that the city periodically undergoes. And those projects set forth in those utility studies also then are reflected in the capital improvement plan. As the mayor noted, while all of these documents lay out a number of priorities, the city does not, and this is not unusual. The City of Isaguac is not unusual in this regard, does not have sufficient resources to fund all of these priorities. So the CIP becomes the mechanism and using the criteria that the mayor spoke about to decide what we are able to put forth for this next six-year planning horizon. Put another way, the city plans for long-term capital improvements through documents such as the park strategic plan, the mobility master plan. And then these plans inform which projects get included in the CIP and are prioritized based on limited revenues. The transportation element of the CIP then gets reflected in the transportation improvement program, which is submitted to the state. And both of these documents then serve as the long-term capital planning element of the comprehensive plan. So it wouldn't be a CIP presentation by the Finance Department if the Finance Department did not take a moment to remind everyone that the CIP is not a funding commitment. It is a planning document. And it is, those plans are subject to change. Projects that are contained within the CIP do not officially get implemented until funding is appropriated through the annual budget process. If the city's revenue outlook changes from what was assumed when the CIP was prepared, what actually gets funded may look different from what was adopted in the CIP. So if our revenue picture deteriorates, as was the case last year as we were dealing with COVID, we might not do the same number of projects that we originally contemplated. On the flip side, if the revenue outlook improves, we might be able to accelerate projects that are in future years or add additional projects. Also, it's important to note that CIP capital projects, particularly large ones, can be complex. And so depending on timing and different variables, project schedules may slip. So for example, last year, there were a number of things that we contemplated that may have involved community involvement that got delayed. So really, it is a planning document based on a set of assumptions at a moment in time. And if those assumptions change, then we might have to adjust what is ultimately funded in the CIP. So when we prepare the CIP this year, I want to talk a little bit about what the council can expect within the document that we will be transmitting to the city council. We will, for each project, we will include a summary of the project and a justification for why that project is funded. We will include estimated costs for each year of the CIP. So if it's a one-year project, there will be a cost for one year. If it's a multi-year project, we would reflect the costs over the six-year planning horizon. For those projects that extend beyond the planning horizon, we also actually include an estimate there. We will include for each year that the project is expected to proceed an anticipated funding source. And because this year's focus of the CIP will be on things that we anticipate being able to afford with existing revenues, in most cases, we will be attaching a revenue source. There may be some instances, however, where the revenue source is not yet known. So for example, the Newport projects are being done over many years, are proceeding as grant dollars become available. But in future years, we may not have those grants secured. So in those instances, there may be a funding source that's more in the to-be-determined category. We will also be including estimated ongoing and operational costs for each project. And we will identify which strategic plan goals or goal is served by the capital project being recommended. So now I want to take some time to pivot to preliminary forecasts for some of the key revenues that feed into the CIP. And the first one that I want to talk about is REIT. So in 2020, we collected $4.3 million in REIT. And as you've heard me talk about before, REIT is an extraordinarily volatile revenue source. And if you unpack data from recent years for the City of Isaguac's REIT collections, what you'll actually find is what I describe as routine, which is residential, smaller commercial transactions. That revenue stream has been pretty stable since 2017, averaging about $3.8 million a year, even during the pandemic. Residential and those routine transactions held up. Where we've seen volatility over the last four years is really in those large commercial transactions. And in the years where we have had several sizable commercial transactions, our REIT revenues have exceeded $5 million. And in those years where commercial, large commercial transactions have been more limited, we've hovered right around that $3.84 million mark. So what we're recommending for this year's CIP is that we assume ongoing revenues in that $3.8 million range. Certainly, if large commercial transactions come through, we would welcome those revenues into our coffer, but we would not contemplate programming those out at this time. That would be something we would do more as a rear-view mirror kind of thing. As you're thinking about the $3.8 million in revenue per year, it's important for me to highlight that the 2020 through 2025 adopted CIP assumed $5.1 million of REIT expenditures in 2022, meaning that there was an assumption in the last CIP that we would be drawing down fund balance to support some of those CIP projects. Given this revenue forecast, it would be equivalent to about $1.3 million worth of fund balance to support the projects contemplated for 2022 in the last CIP. Now, we need to go through and update those estimates, but I just want to give, I want to ground you in the context of this $3.8 million is not unaccounted for at this point. There were some original priorities set for these dollars in the last CIP. In terms of REIT fund balance, REIT does have a healthy fund balance. We are expecting, based on current projections, to begin 2022 with $6.6 million of REIT fund balance. I mentioned in the last slide, some of this would be used if we go forward with all of those projects contemplated in the last CIP for 2022. Some of this would be drawn down for those projects, but it would leave approximately $5.3 million in fund balance that is not yet programmed out that we will be looking at in this next CIP. So this slide basically summarizes what I've just explained verbally. It's also important for me to remind all of you that while we talk about REIT in general terms, there are actually two pots of REIT money. There's REIT I money and REIT II money. And so that $3.8 million of ongoing revenue gets split evenly among, or between REIT I and REIT II. When you're thinking about REIT II, think primarily transportation. That's our main source for transportation projects. REIT I is a little bit more flexible in its use. We do use some of REIT I for transportation, but we also rely on REIT I for our parks investments, IT investments, city facility investments. So that's used a little bit more broadly. Reflective of the multitude of transportation needs that the city has, most of the REIT fund balance is tied to REIT I rather than REIT II. So of the $5.3 million of currently unprogrammed REIT fund balance, $3.6 million is REIT I and about 1.7 is REIT II. So when we're putting forward projects in this next capital improvement plan, we will not only be looking at our needs, but also be aligning it with our funding sources and how we're allowed to use those funding sources by state law. Next, I want to talk a little bit about mitigation and impact fees. So this slide depicts what we are estimating for annual mitigation and impact fees over the next six-year planning horizon. We're anticipating just under $1.6 million in mitigation revenues. But as council knows, these are for specific purposes. Traffic and street, general government, police, parks, fire, bike pedestrian. And then we don't have, we're not anticipating any revenue for open space. But we need to use those dollars for qualifying purposes as enumerated here. So we will again be looking, as we're programming out mitigation dollars, what specific revenues are available for each of these designated purposes. And as council is aware, we need to spend these mitigation dollars within 10 years of collection. So we will also be looking at when the revenues were brought in to make sure that we're deploying them before that 10-year cycle runs out. Mitigation like REIT is also, also enjoys a healthy fund balance among the various categories. We are forecasting about $13.3 million in fund balances. And again, in the CIP, we will be looking for ways to deploy those dollars to support our capital needs. In terms of next steps, so we are going to be beginning the CIP process this month. And the administration anticipates transmitting the CIP, the proposed 2022 to 2027 CIP, to the city council on April 19th. At that meeting, we will present an overview of the proposed CIP. And as the mayor indicated in her opening remarks, this CIP will not assume any new revenue sources as we put forth the various projects for your consideration. In terms of the schedule, as I mentioned, April 19th, we will be transmitting the CIP. We have scheduled a deliberation session for April 29th, a public hearing for May 3rd, an optional deliberation session on May 11th, and then the final public hearing and adoption on May 17th. So that is a glimpse forward to the next three or four months. And hopefully, by the time we're at May 17th, we're not all sitting in rain like we are today. So that concludes what I wanted to cover here today. And we can now open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. And thank you to your team for getting us started off on this process at an earlier time in the year. I think that's really important. We do have a couple of folks lined up for questions. Let's start first with Councilmember De Michelle. And I believe she has a couple of questions to share.
Yes.
Let's remember De Michelle.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the format that's being proposed for the CIP. We have six selection criteria for the projects. Are those selection criterias in order by priority? Or does a project have to meet all six criteria? Or will each project be evaluated on its own merits, more or less, within those criteria, I guess is my question? Oh, Beth. I believe it's on mute, yeah.
Can't hear you, Beth.
Sorry.
Here we go.
Did you want me to go back to the slide? I thought I heard you want me, say you wanted me to go back to the slide.
You don't need to go back unless you think it would be easier for the public.
I will stop, I'll stop sharing that. Sorry, technical difficulties this evening. So in terms of the criteria, we talked about community priority, life safety issues, environmental impacts, to name a few, funding source. We, projects, we will be evaluating those criteria. A project does not need to meet all six of them. I believe there were six criteria. They don't need to meet all six. And one doesn't take higher priority than the other. Those are just variables that we will be considering as part of the decision-making process. So for example, on that slide, life safety was listed at the bottom for no particular reason. But if there is a project that is addressing an urgent life safety issue, that is going to take a higher priority, for example, than something that has, you know, may have been deemed as a community priority just because we need to address life safety issues. Similarly, if a project has a funding source, for example, grant funding and it needs city dollars, that, that might take a higher priority than a project that is a community need that does not have grant dollars to it. So it's, it's, it's a little bit of a puzzle. And one, one criteria doesn't necessarily trump other criterias, criterion. But, you know, it's, it, we're considering them all as a package, I guess is how I would respond to that.
Okay, thank you. And we will see those, we'll see, we'll see that when the package arrives. But I, I just wanted a little bit more clarity about how that process was going to go. And then for the projects that aren't selected for the CIP, then will there be a list of, you know, next up? Or are we going to keep track of those projects that have, are valued, but just don't make it on the CIP list?
Yes, so we, we will be programming out projects over six years. So in considering next up, if more revenue becomes available, the first option is, do you accelerate projects that were contemplated for later years in the CIP? In addition, the last CIP, and I imagine we'll do the same thing again this time around, we, we included a list of projects that were beyond the six-year planning horizon. So there, there are certain projects, again, I'll pick on the Newport projects that we know are going to be worked on beyond the six-year planning horizon. But typically, the next up would be out-year projects that we're not doing now, mainly because we don't have a revenue source or don't have the staffing capacity to take on in the current year or the next planning year.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Pauli, I have two more, but they're more in the realm of comments than questions. Do you want me to hold those until we get to discussion?
Sure, that would be great. I'll come back to you. Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. So trying to pick through my thoughts on this approach. So you said if the approach you're taking to the CIP this year is kind of the more realistic and looking at just the funded projects, yet you also said that REIT varies and you're not going to program out the kind of large commercial revenue, then how, how do we choose how to allocate and which projects we use, we, we choose for that additional REIT revenue? So if you're looking at it, it could be a million and a half dollars a year. How do we decide which projects those go to if everything-ish in the CIP is, has a funding source?
So I'm not sure I completely understand the question, but let me try this as an answer, and if it's non-responsive, let me know. So we will be putting forth a series of projects. We're projecting $3.8 million of ongoing REIT revenue in each of the years over the six-year planning horizon. So we will be programming out projects totaling $3.8 million in each of those years. We also will be looking at some of that existing fund balance. Whether that's all deployed in the first year or the second year, we will then be also articulating and recommending projects over and above $3.8 million that is using that fund balance. As you know, though, with fund balances, you, you want to maintain a level of fund balance. You don't want to spend it down to zero, because if the REIT doesn't materialize and you don't have fund balance to, to fall back on, you've got a problem funding your projects. So, so those, if commercial dollars come in, that then builds into fund balance, and then when we're looking, for example, at the 2023 budget, we would be looking what was contemplated in, in, in the, the CIP for 2023. That would take funding priority. And then, you know, for example, if more commercial dollars come in, maybe you accelerate something that was contemplated for 2024 and move that up. So because we're, you know, you're always on the six-year cycle, and you've got an annual budget process, and frankly, by 2023, hopefully, we will be on a biennial budget process, you've got that sort of that continuous feedback mechanism where you've got, okay, this is what we were contemplating for the CIP for the next six years in the winter of 2021. Summer of 2021, we'll be working on the annual budget, saying, okay, what, how are those revenues panning out compared to what we assumed we would put forth, the projects in the annual budget process? Come 2022, the summer of 2022, we will then be recommend, looking again at the CIP, saying, okay, this is what was contemplated in the CIP. Are those revenues materializing as we anticipated? We would put then those projects forward, either as contemplated in the CIP, adjusted up if revenues are, are looking better, adjusted down if revenues are, are looking worse. So that's, that's kind of the feedback mechanism that goes into informing what ultimately gets funded out of the CIP.
Councilmember Walsh.
Great, I've got one more, if you'll let me.
Of course.
Okay. So does the approach of kind of having a more realistic, only listing out funded projects, does that approach differ at all for the enterprise or utility funds? I would guess that more of those projects would be requirements, life, you know, altering types of things. So is, is there a different approach that comes for those versus general fund?
Yes, so most, if not all, in, in most cases, 99.9% of the time, projects that we will be putting forward in the CIP are projects that were contemplated in the REIT studies, because we need to set the utility rates based on a set of project assumptions, operating assumptions. We then set the rates to support that mix of projects. So in some respects, not to be disrespectful for my colleagues in the utilities, the, the CIP for the utilities is a little bit less interesting, because a lot of that work has already been done when you were considering and contemplating the utility rates. So we take what was contemplated there, put that in the CIP. Again, you know, all of these, this is subject to change, so, you know, if costs of projects fluctuate, if timing fluctuates, then we would update that in the CIP and subsequent budgets. But the idea is, is that it's reflected, you know, both are, are reflected in both documents, acknowledging that if things change, we may need to make some tweaks there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I'd like to go to Deputy Council President Ray for a question.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. Super excited to see the work on the CIP starting earlier in the year. My question is, does the council, what does the council do between now and mid-April when we get the budget transmitted? There's some, there's some good time here for some good work, and I just want to know what we ought to be doing.
Thank you for the question. It won't be a budget, it'll be a plan. I think last year, we had a lot of confusion over whether or not we were proposing a capital improvement budget, which would kind of tie your hand, so I just want to make sure we use the word "plan." And I'll hand it over to the Finance Director.
And I misspoke. I know it's a plan.
So typically, between, in, if, typically, this phase of a CIP, this is done by the administration. And once the administration develops its recommendations, they're transmitted similar to the budget process. So I'm not familiar with a, a specific role for the city council in that, that proposal phase, except to say that we're, we're talking about the CIP today, but the mayor did indicate that there is likely a need for additional revenue sources in future years. And so one of the things that I think we wanted you to start discussing today is whether on a parallel track, the city council wishes to start discussions about what a new revenue package might look like. Again, that would be separate from the CIP, and the timing of that, I think, is, is subject for discussion, but perhaps that's something that the council could start considering in, in the intervening period.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. I am going to go back to Councilmember D., oh, hang on, I'm going to ask a question first. So we've had one council member that's been dropping on and off. I want to make sure that we are able to get all the questions on the table before I come to comments, so I'll give a, a second to sign up in the chat. I know Councilmember D. Michelle would like to have some comments, and so are there any other questions before we proceed? And while I'm waiting, as the Finance Director just stated, there's a couple of things we'd be looking for. Comments on the capital improvement program process, and any general comments you want to provide on the second question, which was consideration of a discussion later in this year on future new revenue sources to support capital. So I am not seeing any more questions, so let's start with comments. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Thank you, and, and this is Councilmember D. Michelle. That's actually a perfect segue, because I just, from the presentation, I just was a little concerned that we were focused on the Transportation Benefit District, and so I would like us to make sure that every option is on the table throughout our discussions, and that when it comes time, that we do a really careful pro and con on every kind of, of revenue option that we're considering. So I just wanted to get that on the table. And then my other comment has to do with the community engagement, and I see that we're contemplating doing community engagement in the, was it the first quarter, first quarter or second quarter?
Well, the schedule that we laid out, and it was just an example, would be starting in the second quarter of 2021.
Okay. I'm just hoping that we are considering doing a community advisory group that involves every neighborhood in the city. I would like us to really consider a very wide and transparent community outreach. We're in a difficult period, and if we're talking about new revenue sources during, in the aftermath of the pandemic, I don't think it's impossible. I think it's very needed, but I think we're going to need to listen very, very carefully to our community and get everybody's voices to the table. And when we're contemplating new revenue sources, again, I think this is a very critical area for us to be looking at it through our equity lens. Taxation is certainly one of the great big issues when it comes to equity, and how are we treating the people in our community who are less able to carry a tax burden when compared to others who are more able? So those are, are my comments. I, I do want to say overall, I'm very pleased with the direction that this is going. I, the old CIP with everybody, every, every project thrown in, I think isn't clear, and I think this is a much clearer direction, so I support it. Thank you.
I am not sure if you can hear me right now, because I'm having some headset issues. Ah, there we go. Okay, but I'm kind of frozen on screen. Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle, and let me look through here. Anyone else for comments? Let's go to Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, and I apologize for my internet going in and out, but hopefully this will work. So I agree with what Councilmember D. Michelle said. I also just wanted to add that there were councilmembers in an ad hoc committee that had looked at several options for a Transportation Benefit District projects and done a deep dive on that recently, within a year or so, I believe, and just wanted to make sure for continuity that we are making the best use of that body of work as well, because I know a lot of, a lot of work went into that. And thank you for that presentation.
Thank you. Next, let's have Councilmember Hall.
Thanks, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Hall. Not, not a whole lot more to add to that. Councilmember D. Michelle and Council President Hunt said it perfectly, I think. I'm, I'm happy with this new process. I'm eager to see where it goes. I am ready, if not eager, to talk about new revenues, the benefits that they provide, but also the impact to our community. And I think I applaud Councilmember D. Michelle for bringing up the issue of equity in the situation. Certainly needs to be top of mind as we move forward. And then I was also glad to see community engagement listed first, and that, you know, going from community determines what projects we move forward with. So I was just, wanted to say that I'm happy to see that come first, and no other comments.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who would like to comment? I'll give it a second to look in the chat. Okay, thank you very much, Director Goldberg. The next item of business this evening is the Consent Calendar, and the Consent Calendar was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the Consent Calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion? Council President Hunt.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I move to approve the Consent Calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
This is Chris Ray, second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will go to the clerk for the roll call vote. Starting with Councilmember D. Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Mart.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda this evening is regular business, and we have a couple of ABs. The first one being AB 8083, Water Resource Inventory, Inventory Area 8 Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee Final Plan. And the ask before council this evening is to approve the resolution. I'd like to invite Senior Engineer Alan Quinn to present on this item. Alan?
Good evening. I'm sorry, I just lost my, my Bluebeam PowerPoint, so I just need to try to get it up here. I apologize. Just give me, bear with me while I... Unfortunately, I have to connect back into the VPN, so that's why it's taking a little bit of time.
Alan, this is Tisha.
Yeah.
I'm happy to display the slide.
Are you sure? Okay, yeah, I just, okay, well, it's up to you. All right, that's fine. Well, let me begin then. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council President Hunt, and members of the city council. My name is Alan Quinn, Senior Stream Water Engineer and Public Works, and tonight Stephanie Potts from the Department of Ecology has graciously offered to present the RIAT 8 Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee Final Plan to the city council for consideration and approval. Stephanie is Watershed Restoration and Enhancement Lead and is responsible for the coordinating and implementation of the plan through the Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee process. As staff, I am the city representative at the Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee, so I've been attending most of the meetings over the last, I'd say, about 18 months. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Stephanie.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to speak this evening. I'm joining from my phone, because my, my computer camera stopped working, so please let me know if there's any kind of technical issues that are going haywire while I'm presenting. So again, my name's Stephanie Potts. I work for Department of Ecology. I'm the Streamflow Restoration Implementation Lead for RIAT 8, which is the Cedar Smith Watershed, and the Chair of the RIAT 8 Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee. So if you can go to the outline slide, which is the second slide, today in my presentation, I'll just provide a brief overview of the Streamflow Restoration Law. I'll talk about the membership of the RIAT 8 Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee, give you an overview of the elements in the RIAT 8 Watershed Plan, and then talk about next steps in terms of kind of where we are in the process now and what's coming up. Next slide, please. So the Streamflow Restoration Law was passed in January of 2018, and it clarified how local governments can issue building permits for homes intending to use a permit exempt well for their domestic water supply, and then offsets those impacts through this local watershed planning effort. Another component of that law was to authorize $300 million in capital funds over 15 years to fund stream flow restoration projects. to fund stream flow restoration projects. Next slide, please. So certain types of small groundwater withdrawals are exempt from permitting requirements. Those are single homes, small developments, irrigation of small lawns and gardens, stop watering, an industry that needs minimal water, and those types of wells are called permanent exempt wells. And so these permanent exempt wells often provide water where municipal supply is not available, often in kind of rural unincorporated areas. And the Streamflow Restoration Law, which is RCW 9094, it applies to new permanent exempt wells that serve indoor and outdoor domestic household uses. So it only applies to wells that are installed after the law was passed in January of 2018. And a couple of the things it does, it attaches a new fee for those wells of $500, and then it restricts the withdrawal from those new wells to an annual average of 950 gallons per day, which was lower than the existing cap of 5,000 gallons per day. So that's a little bit about permanent exempt wells. Next slide, please. And so another kind of key term in this plan is consumptive water use. And so in the context of the Streamflow Restoration Law, consumptive use is water that is evaporated, transpired, consumed by humans, or otherwise removed from the immediate water environment due to the use of these wells. So for indoor household use, most homes with wells are also in septic systems, so we assume that a lot of that water goes back into groundwater, and only about 10% is considered consumptive. Whereas outdoor water use, we assume that 80% is lost to the immediate, immediate water environment, mainly due to evapotranspiration. Next slide, please. So there are 15 impacted watersheds under this law, and the law includes a process for developing plans to estimate the impacts from new permanent exempt domestic withdrawals over 20 years, and then identify projects and actions to offset those impacts and provide what the law calls a net ecological benefit. So the major steps to do that, planning work included, first, estimating the consumptive water use from new domestic wells for the 20-year period of 2018 to 2038, then identifying projects to offset that consumptive use and provide an ecological benefit. And the plan really looks at those projects on a watershed scale, so the projects and the wells don't need to always be, you know, a direct kind of in the same time, in the same place. It's offsetting at the watershed scale. And in addition to offsetting that water, the plan also can include projects that enhance habitat for fish. And then once that plan is completed, then Department of Ecology is required to evaluate the plan and make an determination of whether it achieves an ecological benefit. And in July of 2019, Ecology released guidance for determining ecological benefit that provided some support and kind of instructions for committees to use for the planning process, and also defined the term ecological benefit and a number of other terms. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there are 15 watersheds across the state that are undergoing this planning process. A number of them have just completed their process, so the two in red had a very short timeline of one year, and they completed theirs in 2019. The ones in pink were just formally adopted last week. And then the ones in green are all kind of going through the same process. They're newly formed committees that are chaired by Department of Ecology. Next slide, please. So in RIAT 8, for these newly formed committees, the law directed Ecology to establish and chair the committee and develop this watershed plan and invite specific entities to participate. So the law was pretty specific in who should be part of this committee, including cities, counties, tribes, Department of Fish and Wildlife, the largest municipal water purveyor, and organizations to represent interest groups, including environmental, residential construction, and agricultural interest groups. And Ecology invited all of the cities in the watershed to participate, however, many of the cities declined to participate because they, they didn't think that it was especially relevant to them, because a lot of cities don't have a lot of permanent exempt wells going in, or, you know, for other reasons. So that slide shows the entities that decided to participate in this process. Next slide, please. And so in terms of the role of the committees and Ecology, Ecology is working with these committees to develop the plan. One thing that the law was very clear about is that each member of the committee must approve the plan before it can be submitted to Ecology for review, and then once the plan is approved unanimously, it comes to Ecology review, for review. Ecology reviews the plan and makes a determination of whether it meets a net ecological benefit, and then decides whether to adopt the plan. And the law also had a deadline of June 30th, 2021, for all of that to happen, so we had a very limited amount of time to complete this planning process. Next slide, please. So now I'll go into an overview of what's in the Cedar-Samish Watershed Restoration Enhancement Plan. So the planning horizon, as I mentioned, was 2018 through 2038. In order to kind of better see the relationship between projects and where we think the wells are going to go, we divided the watershed into 12 sub-basins, and then we looked at how many wells we thought were going to go in over the 20-year period, and we projected 967 new wells. We used that number to estimate consumptive use and estimated 425.4 acre-feet per year of consumptive use. And then we looked for projects and actions to offset that, that estimated consumptive use, and there's, there's a total of 36 projects in the plan, and I'll give a brief overview of those. So I'll show you some maps to visually display the information I just told you about. So if you can go to the first map, which shows the sub-basins, you can see how we divided the watershed into 12 sub-basins, and then there's an inset map there, so you can see how, where Issaquah is in relation to those sub-basins. So in that little red circle, you can see that Issaquah overlaps with the Issaquah Sub Basin and the Lakes of Mamish Creeks Sub Basin. Next slide, please. And so the next slide shows the 967 new wells and how those, how we expect those to be distributed across the watershed. We expect those to mostly be in rural unincorporated King and Snohomish Counties and outside of urban growth areas. And so they're mostly in the sub-basins in the Lower Cedar, Issaquah, Bear Evans, and Little Bear, so the dark orange and red colors in the map. Next slide, please. And then the consumptive use estimate really reflects, you know, where the wells are going to go. So we, we use that 20-year projection of new wells to estimate consumptive use and estimated 425.4 acre-feet, and then the committee added a margin of safety and sought, sought projects to offset at least about 700 acre-feet, just to account for uncertainties and trying to guess what's going to happen in 20 years. So we just wanted to make sure that we went over our estimate just in case, in case we were wrong. And there's a technical memorandum that's in an appendix that goes into a lot more detail about the methodology and assumptions involved in that consumptive use estimate. Next slide, please. So in terms of the types of projects and actions in the plan, the plan includes 11 projects that we're calling water offset projects, and 25 projects we're calling habitat projects to meet that net ecological benefit standard. To find projects, we distributed a call for projects in January of last year. We also asked committee members to recommend projects to include, and we contracted with a few technical consulting firms to help with project development, and those were Geo Engineers and Washington Water Trust. And so the main project types included in the plan are water right acquisitions, managed aquifer recharge, stormwater infiltration, habitat projects, and there are also a number of policy recommendations. Next slide, please. So for the water offset projects, most of them are water right acquisition opportunities. There are also two managed aquifer recharge projects that would use recycled water from the Bright Water Treatment Plant. And these projects are really conceptual. A lot of them we developed from scratch during this planning process, so a lot of them need a lot more work, you know, to kind of further develop them before they could be implemented. So that was kind of one of the key reasons why we wanted to have a really robust project portfolio that goes above and beyond our estimated consumptive use, because it's likely that not all these projects will be implemented. Next slide, and I'll go through a couple in more detail that are in or around Issaquah. So the first one is the pre-identified number two water right acquisition. Some of the water rights we often refer to by number instead of by anything that kind of identifies the property, the, the water right holder, just out of sensitivity for including, you know, private information. So this water right served a housing development in Issaquah, and now those houses are served by Samish Plateau Water and Sewer District. So the Overdale Water Association no longer is using the water right, and one of the reasons why we looked at this water right as an opportunity is because the water right holder put this into Ecology's Trust Water Rights Program as a temporary donation, which is a way to kind of protect a water right that's not being used from being relinquished. So we knew that the water right wasn't currently in use. And for this water right and other water rights in the plan, Washington Water Trust really did a lot of the, you know, analysis and outreach, and so they initiated outreach to this water right holder in the spring of last year, just to kind of see if they were interested in a potential acquisition, and they did express interest. However, additional conversations need to happen before the project moves forward, so to confirm their interest and negotiate a price for the water right. Another thing to note is that these water right quantities are based on, for the most part, a pretty rough analysis, so that would also change with further investigation and negotiation of the purchase. Next slide, please. And so there's another water right that's in Issaquah's well, pre-identified water right number four. This water right was used to support dairy production. It's also currently placed in the Trust Water Right Program as a temporary donation, so we know that the water right is not currently being used because it's being held in that program. And for this water right as well, Washington Water Trust initiated outreach last spring just to see if the water right holder was interested. They, they seemed open to further discussions, but those discussions need to still happen because really, at that point, we then just needed to focus on completing the plan, and then once the plan is approved and adopted, then we can go back to having these discussions. Next slide, please. So I'll give you an overview of the habitat projects that are included in the plan. For these, we really relied on committee members to help identify projects to include. We looked for projects that were larger in kind of a geographic scale and in sub-basins with higher expected consumptive use. And then one thing that committee talked about a lot is that, you know, a lot of these types of habitat projects, like floodplain restoration, levee removals, a lot of those types of projects have the potential to recharge groundwater and have a stream flow benefit. However, it's, they're really difficult to quantify, so we explored trying to put a number on those for a while, and then ultimately the committee chose not to try to quantify the stream flow benefit from those projects, just to acknowledge that many of them do have a stream flow benefit. And so they're included in the plan really to kind of provide that, more of that ecological benefit. And then on the next slide, I'll just describe one that's in Issaquah. It's the Issaquah Creek Instream and Repairing Restoration in Lake Mamish State Park. It was proposed by Mountains Sisoun Greenway Trust, and it would restore habitat along Issaquah Creek within the Lakes of Mamish State Park. Next slide, please. And then also, it's kind of a subset of habitat projects, there are a number of stormwater retrofit projects. These were identified through our call for projects by a number of cities responding with, with projects that they suggested including in the plan. Next slide, please. And so this slide shows how the projects are distributed across the watershed, and also how they kind of match up with our estimated consumptive use. So the consumptive use is higher in the kind of dark blue areas, and then the water offset projects are shown with circles, and the habitat projects are shown with squares. Next slide, please. And so the plan also includes a section on prospective projects and actions. So these are projects that the committee wanted to show support for. We, we didn't have a specific project description, but wanted to show that they would support these types of projects being developed in the future. Next slide, please. And then the committee also chose to include some policy and regulatory recommendations related to stream flow restoration. One was well reporting upgrades. One thing we found out through this process is there's not a good existing tracking system for permanent exempt wells, so they thought that was really important in the future. Overall, just projects or actions to encourage connections to public water, more development and use of reclaimed water, voluntary metering, water conservation education incentives, and water conservation during droughts. Next slide. And then the plan also includes recommendations for adaptive management of the plan, and that, again, highlights the need to track the number and location of PE wells, to monitor project implementation and, and the water offset achieved, and whether we're meeting our, our goals there, and then regular reports from Ecology to show how the plan's being implemented. And then the adaptive management recommendations also say that, you know, if it looks like we're really not on track to meet our goals, Ecology can adjust the plan if needed, or the committee can reconvene to make recommendations as well. And next slide. So in November of last year, the committee provided interim approval of the final draft plan, and so where we are now is that committee members are sharing the plan with their local decision makers in order to get authorization for approval before we have a final vote, which is currently scheduled for February 25th. And as I mentioned, the legislation requires all members of the committee to approve the plan before it can be submitted to Ecology for review. But the legislation also has a description of what happens if we do not achieve that. So if the plan is not approved unanimously, then Ecology will finish the plan, instructs, the law instructs Ecology to send the plan to the Samin Recovery Funding Board for a technical review, and then we would finalize the plan and initiate a rulemaking process. And so that's something that happened once already in, in RIAT 1, which is the Nookstack Watershed. They did not approve their plan, and so Ecology had a rulemaking process for that watershed. Next slide, please. And so post-plan submission, after the plan is approved by the committee, Ecology will initiate the SEPA process, State Environmental Policy Act, and that includes an environmental checklist and threshold determination for a non-project programmatic put-in review. And we expect to have a 30-day public comment period, although the minimum would be 14 days, but we're hoping we'll have time to do 30 days. And then Ecology will view the, view the plan, determine whether it achieves an ecological benefit, and the Ecology Director will decide whether to adopt the plan, all with a deadline of June 30th of this year. Next slide, please. And so one thing to note, you know, with this, this law, it really focuses on development of the plan, but there is not an obligation for entities on the committee to, to implement the plan. So by including a project or action in the plan, it does not obligate the sponsor to implement that project or, you know, to carry out that. implement that project or, you know, to carry out that recommendation. Next slide, please. However, to support implementation, the legislature authorized that $300 million grant program to really, you know, provide incentives for implementing projects in the plan. And so we've had two grant rounds so far and awarded about $40 million, and expect to have another grant round. Kind of depending on what happens with legislative session will determine the timing of that. But one thing to note is that, you know, we don't expect this to be enough funding to fund all the projects and all of these plans that are being developed across the state. So we expect that other sources of funds will be needed to fully implement these plans. And so that's all I have for my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Alan. And just in case council's not aware, we also have Public Works Director Bob Bjork here today. I will give you all a second or two to put something, any questions you have in the chat box, and we'll move on from there to comments. So first up, let's have a question from Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt, and I had a question on the well, well reporting upgrades and the tracking of the permit exempt wells. And so I guess my question is, what's the recommended way to track that? Would it be tracked at the level of the city, or would it be tracked at a county level? Or is there more detail on the recommended way to go about that? Interested.
Yeah, so the recommendation is for Ecology to really manage that tracking. The legislation already requires some reporting from local jurisdictions that have wells going in within their boundaries. So mostly counties are who that applies to. And so counties are already sending Ecology, since this law was passed in 2018, counties have been sending Ecology annually a record of the number of wells that are going in. And so the recommendation is for Ecology to kind of either build a database or adjust a database we already have to see where the wells are going in and identify which ones are permanently exempt, because the database we have now is based on notices from drillers. And so it doesn't identify the type of well accurately. And so really, it's on, the recommendation would fall on Ecology to develop a better system to identify the type of well and show where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Council President Hunt. It looks like Council Member Mertz has a question.
Thank you. This is Council Member Mertz. So help me understand how this would work in practice. I saw you talked about Derigold, you talked about the neighborhood up on the hill, and
Overdale.
Overdale, thank you. Having a senior moment. So how would, in those particular cases, how would the conversations go with those entities? I guess Derigold used to use a ton of water and doesn't use it anymore, and so they'd be compensated? Like, what is that? Obviously, there's going to be specific discussions with those two entities, but broadly speaking, how would those conversations work?
Yeah, so I think the main source of funding would likely be the Stream Flow Restoration Grant Program. How this has happened and other examples is kind of depending on the entity that owns the water. If they're a public or nonprofit entity, they could apply directly for grant funding, and they would need to kind of show justification for the amount of funds and why they think that's a fair price. Or the other way it happens sometimes is there's an intermediary. And so, for example, Washington Water Trust, who did a lot of that analysis for us, they often are kind of involved in negotiating these transactions. And so they could, you know, approach the water right holder, confirm their interest, negotiate the price, do a lot of that analysis to see, you know, exactly what is that valid quantity of water, and then apply for, you know, funding from the grant program, for example, to cover the cost of that acquisition. And then ultimately, the goal is that that water right would be transferred into Ecology's Trust Water Program to be held permanently for a stream flow benefit.
Okay, so if I, so what you're saying is that the conversation with an entity would be a one-time lump sum to basically give up the rights to accessing that water?
Yeah, it's very similar to, you know, a land acquisition. It would be kind of putting a value on the water and negotiating that price and then acquiring it.
Got it. Okay, but it would be a permanent transaction?
Correct.
That was the part I was missing. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Mertz. Stephanie and Alan, I'm not seeing any additional questions. I'm not sure if there's any comments that the council members want to be shared, and while I'm waiting to see, I'll just thank you as well for your presentation. Very good, very thorough. We do have a motion on the table, and Council President, or sorry, we could have a motion on the table. I'm looking for someone to make the motion. Council President Hunt, it looks like he'd like to make it.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 2021-01, approving the Water Resource Inventory Area 8 Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee Final Draft Plan.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
This is Chris Ray. I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council discussion? And I'll keep an eye on the chat to see. Let's go to Council President Hunt.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. This is actually my second time seeing this presentation because I'm also the city's representative on the YR8 Salmon Recovery Council, and I appreciate the, having seen it twice because it is very complicated and there are a lot of parts to it. I think one concept that seems to be increasingly important is this concept of net ecological benefit, and that we are more than offsetting our, in this case, the water that's being removed from the system. But I think that that's important as we continue to try to improve our nature around us. So I appreciate that approach a lot, and glad that that approach is being taken here. And then I also learned from the documentation here that the flow trends in the Issaquah sub-basin actually are specifically of a concern. It notes that in the report. So I think to make sure that we maintain our habitat, this sort of net ecological benefit approach is really important, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Council Member Hall.
Thanks, Mr. Pauli. Council Member Hall here. First and foremost, I'll be supporting this motion tonight. I really wanted to speak tonight just to give my appreciation and thanks to you both. Read this plan over the weekend, and very clearly, it is a heavy lift to have done all this work. So I thank you very much for everything that you did on the back end to get it here in front of us today to support net ecological benefits all across our watershed. So I just wanted to send my note of appreciation your way. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Hall. Next up, Council Member Goodman.
Thank you, Stephanie, for coming to our meeting and presenting to us. I too read it, and I just wanted to add it on, add on to Council Member Hall. Hall's comment about the plan is it's also very readable, so means it's very accessible to the public, which is very, very much appreciated. And I too will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Member Goodman. I'm not seeing any additional comments at this time, and so the motion before the council is to approve Resolution Number 2021-01, approving the Water Resource Inventory Area 8 Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee Final Draft Plan. You may have to work on the title a little bit. So we will go to the clerk, or everyone called it.
Starting with Council Member Goodman.
Aye.
Council Member Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Council Member Mertz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Council Member Walsh.
Aye.
Council Member DeMichelle.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. Stephanie, thank you for presenting tonight. The council members' comments, I think, show the quality of the work that you brought and the understandability it has for the public, and also the importance of the work you're doing. So thank you very much for doing that, and thank you, Alan, and thank you, Bob, for being here. Okay. So the next item that we have under regular business is AB 8079, Extension of the RV Park Management Agreement. And the request before council this evening is for authorization. And I'd like to have Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder come and present to us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening and good evening, members of city council. This is Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator. And also joining me for this presentation is Tracy Andres, who is our Consulting Project Manager for the Transportation Opportunity, I'm sorry, the TOD project, which stands for Transit Oriented Development Project that we've been discussing over the past couple of months. So, Tisha, if you'd go to the next slide, please. As you indicated, Madam Mayor, the purpose for this evening's discussion is that we're seeking council approval to renew our RV park management agreement for the period of January through June of this year with Midwest Members Only LLC. The city has, the city owns the land, by way of background, the city owns the land on which the RV park operates, and we've been in a long-term management agreement with Midwest Members LLC. And we're, you know, this year, the agreement looks a little bit different than what it has looked in years past, and that's largely because of the anticipation that CenturyLink, now called Lumen, would take ownership of a portion of the RV park property in order to have, relocate their operations, and provide land for the transportation, Transit Oriented Development Project. I'm having trouble with that acronym this evening. And so, in anticipation of Lumen taking ownership of a portion of the RV park, as we've discussed at recent city council meetings, the RV park management agreement, we're proposing a shorter term than what we would otherwise propose, because things are a little bit inflexed as we have conversations with city council about whether or not to expand the RV park on city-owned land that's adjacent to the current footprint. That conversation is scheduled for March. And also, we will have a better idea mid-year as to whether Lumen will take possession of that portion of the RV park. So there's a few things that are undetermined in our future at this point in time, and that's why we're proposing this short six-month agreement, management agreement. So with that, at this point, I'd like to introduce Tracy Andres, and she's going to go over some of the details of what's in the proposed agreement. And also, as Tracy Andres is doing a lot of the background, behind-the-scenes work for the TOD project, I wanted to be sure to get her in front of you this evening, take that opportunity so you can start to match her face with her name. So Tracy, please take it away. Andrea, this is Tisha. I'm not seeing Tracy on the line at the moment, unless she's, we have one person who's called in by phone, but I don't see her in our participant list. Okay. Well, thank you, Tisha. I definitely saw her on earlier, so maybe she can join us. Perhaps she, like others, are having some internet and technical difficulties this evening. So Tracy, I invite you to let us know that you've joined us. If you can either raise your hand if you're dialing in, and the clerks can help you with that, or if you can leave a comment in the chat so that I know when you're back. But otherwise, I'll proceed with the rest of the presentation. So the proposal for the, that we have before you this evening, the proposed management agreement, would, as I said, be through June 30th of this year, and would include all of the existing RV sites. Same footprints that the RV park has occupied over the past many years that we've had this management agreement. You'll see a map on this slide and also provided in the council packet. The reservations beyond June 30th, beyond the length of the agreement, would only be accepted for spaces within what's labeled here as the monthly site area. And that's where most of the long-term users of the RV park currently are. You'll see in the map on this slide, there's a shaded area that it says CenturyLink Replacement Site. That's the portion of the RV park that CenturyLink, now called Lumen, would be taking possession of if the transaction is to go through. And that portion of the RV park property, as we discussed, I believe in December, is where most of the, not all, of the temporary users. And by temporary, I mean those who have reservations for less than a month, looking at a couple of days, could be one night, could be a couple of days, could be a week. That's where those very temporary users are situated versus those who rent the site by a monthly basis. So that's a summary of what's in the proposal. Again, it looks very similar to the management agreements that we've had in the past with this organization, knowing that the future management agreement will likely look different should Lumen take possession of a portion of the RV park site. And next slide, please, Tisha. So in terms of timing and next steps, we're asking city council this evening to renew the management agreement that is in your packet. And knowing that the future, we will need to negotiate another management agreement that speaks to the future site and what that future site will look like. We expect those negotiations to occur following the city council study session in March, where we get guidance from city council as to whether or not we expand the RV park into the adjacent city-owned parcel. And also, it will be informed by, you know, whether the property transaction moves forward with Lumen as anticipated. And of course, then, at that point in time, we would return to city council to request approval for the future management agreement. I would anticipate the earliest time that we would do that would be in June of this year. Next slide, please, Tisha. Great. And so as we stated before, we're, the administration is recommending that the city council approve this proposed management agreement, and I look to see if council has any questions.
Thank you very much, Andrea, and let us know if Tracy does show up as well. At least we could introduce her, but it has been a very strange night here in our IT council meeting. Let's start with some questions. Council Member Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilwoman Walsh. So I know this is about the agreement, but as we are kind of looking at this map, I'm wondering if I can just sneak in a question. You showed a map that included a blue area for the Lumen Replacement Site, and then a red-lined area, oh gosh, that sounds horrible, an area surrounded in red, that is the monthly sites. But then there's maybe six sites that are in kind of a yellow background, along with the office location. Wondering if you can talk about those and whether or not the office will be kept, or what those specific areas are talking about?
Great. Thank you, Council Member Walsh. Again, this is Andrea Snyder. So that shaded in area, that's shaded in with a beige or a yellow from number 79 through, I think that's 84, that, those are spots that I think we are, that, again, we believe that long-term that long-term or monthly site users are using at this point in time. They haven't necessarily been designated that in advance by the RV Park Management. Again, we do not anticipate that should Lumen take possession of that blue-shaded portion of the site, we do not anticipate any relocation or dislocation of users in that area because they are all temporary, you know, one-day, one-week type of uses occurring there. The office and the other buildings, there's laundry and bathroom facility as well on the site. Those, the laundry and bathroom facility, we believe will stay where it is in its current location. The office, I think we, our best determination is that we might need to move it over a couple of feet. And so we're working with the development team to be able to do that, to meet the requirements of the site and to provide that portion of the park to Lumen as they're requiring. So that's what we anticipate in the future, that the office would remain, but we would just need to move it over a little bit. Does that answer your question, Council Member Walsh?
Yes, I have another one.
Go ahead.
So this idea of only extending the management agreement for, you know, six months, basically, does that, what happens if that expires and we haven't created another agreement? Does that cause any problems for the residents or for management of this? And it appears that the agreement has been expired for a month, so I'm guessing not, but I just want to ask.
Thank you for that question. Again, this is Andrea Snyder. So what happens when an agreement like this expires is that unless we have it in writing, we assume that the agreement continues until we're able to form a different agreement or until we have in writing, you know, a different expectation per the contract. I think the reason why we're bringing this to council to extend this agreement for another six months or so is to be able to provide more certainty to the RV Park users, because at this point in time, I think there are some that are a little nervous about what is taking place and whether or not they'll be able to stay there or what they can predict in the future. In addition, it provides more predictability for the RV Park Management Company in terms of when they can continue to take reservations and that they are, they can have a little bit more certainty and predictability for their business. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you, Council Member Walsh. I am not seeing any other questions at this time, but I will give it a second and also ask that the City Clerk put the motion in the chat in case we are ready to head towards Not seeing additional questions. Is there someone who would propose a motion? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the updated RV Park Management Agreement with Midwest Members Only LLC for the period of January 1st through June 30th, 2021.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
This is Chris Ray. I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Let's move to discussion, and I'll keep my eye on the chat to look for comments. Council President Hunt, followed by Council Member Hall.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. A few things. One, I appreciate what Deputy City Administrator Snyder said regarding that this provides a little bit more certainty for the RV Park users about the length of time for another agreement. So I appreciate that. I had also emailed in some questions about the communication strategy, and it sounds like there's a very thorough communication strategy to make sure that the RV Park users are aware of the upcoming changes and know what to expect. And I think that's very important also. Also important that we still expect that we do not have, we can accommodate the long-term users of the RV Park, and we do not expect to have to displace any long-term users. So those are all very important, and just wanted to make sure that I stated that all of those things were very important to me with going forward with this agreement at this point. I had asked previously about the playground. It is in the area that's in the, in the area that is to be acquired by Lumen. And so I think, you know, as we go forward, just to make sure that those sorts of amenities are at least taken into consideration, I think would also, would also be important. And then lastly, I'm looking forward to the next conversation in which we consider the possibility of extending the RV Park into the adjacent parcel, or at least thinking about what we would need to take into consideration to do that, to consider that, because as I've said before, I think this is potentially a form of housing that people prefer, and as we think about how we can have more housing options in our city, I think we should strongly consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Council Member Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Council Member Hall here. Well, I was going to say a lot of the same things. I will just start by saying I'm supportive of this. I will also say, Deputy City Administrator Snyder, I also do appreciate what you said about this providing a level of predictability for the tenants and for management there. Seems very straightforward for me, so I'll be supportive of it. I too am also looking forward to our study session discussion in March. Other than that, no comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Member Hall. I'm keeping my eye on to see if anyone else wants to join, so I'll give it a few seconds for additional comments before I reread the motion. Okay. Seeing none, the motion on the table is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the updated RV Park Management Agreement with Midwest Members Only LLC for the period of January 1st through January 30th, 2021. And I will go to the City Clerk for a roll call vote.
Beginning with Council Member Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Council Member Mertz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Council Member Walsh.
Aye.
Council Member De Michelle.
Aye.
Council Member Goodman.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next and last item on our agenda this evening is good of the order, and so I will keep my eye on the chat to see if anyone has anything for good of the order. Just so you know, I can't see your faces because my script is blocking your faces. So if you're raising your hand, I won't see it. And just in case, I will move through some upcoming council meetings, but if you want to add something for good of the order, please feel free to put it in the chat. We will be having a council study session on Tuesday, February 9th, and the potential agenda items at this time include electric vehicle charging, mobility master plan, amendments to IMC 12.10, which is the complete streets section, Old Town Traffic Calming Update, transit system update, and near-term capital projects update. There will be a City Council regular meeting on February 16th, and the potential agenda items include a regional coalition for housing, administrative budget and work program, and trust fund recommendations, the 2021 budget amendment and budget authorizations, a 2021 docket of comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment, and funding for emergency housing, business assistance grants, and fit and fun outside funding. There is no executive session this evening, and I'm not seeing any additional good of the order items, so that there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 9:00. Good evening.